Twenty first, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heather, will you please take the roll call?
Councilmember Bachman.
Here.
Mayor Beaton.
Here.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Here.
Mayor Protem Sullivan.
Here.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Here.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Here.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Here.
City manager.
Here.
City attorney.
Here.
DPW director.
Here.
Finance director.
Here.
Planning and zoning director.
Here.
Police chief.
Here.
Fire chief.
Here.
City engineer.
Here.
Roll call complete.
Thank you. Before we get started, there's a motion to amend the agenda. The motion to amend the agenda would be to add an item under number eight, new business. Item B, allowing action by council on this additional item, which is consideration of a resolution proposing a charter amendment to section two dash three of the city charter. At the July fourteenth, twenty twenty-two study session, city council determined it was advisable and in the best interest of the residents of the city of Manistee to remove from the city charter the requirement that individuals be at least twenty-five years old to be eligible for the office as city councilperson, directed staff to prepare the necessary documents to proceed accordingly. The city attorney has drafted two resolutions for council to consider that would accomplish this request. At this time, council could take action.
We're not taking action on it right now. We're just adding this item to the agenda.
Okay, we're just adding that on. Well, I'm just reading the script here. Okay. All right, I need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Roll call.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Public hearings, we have none. Citizen comments on agenda-related items. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on agenda-related items only. Citizens in attendance shall be recognized by the mayor for comments limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Do we have anybody that wants to come forward at this time? Seeing none. Consent agenda. All agenda items marked with an asterisk are on the consent agenda and considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to the approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item removed with the consent agenda. May have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Consent agenda items include approval of minutes, payroll, invoices, notification regarding next study session, consideration of a temporary activity for Manistee County Conservation District to hold two boat washing events at First Street Beach. At this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
A second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan. Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Unfinished business, we have none. Under new business, consideration of the purchase of a twenty-twenty-two Chevy Tahoe. The Manistee City Police Department maintains a fleet of police vehicles to serve city residents. Police vehicles are replaced as they reach the end of their useful life cycle, and the purchase of a new patrol vehicle is warranted. Vehicle pricing has been secured from Berger Chevrolet through M deal, and three quotes were collected from uplifting, outfitting, affitting companies with Tell-Rad being the lowest bid. At this time, council could take action to authorize the purchase of a twenty-twenty-two Chevy Tahoe from Berger Chevrolet for thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and twenty-eight dollars to be outfitted by Tell-Rad for twelve thousand and sixty-nine dollars.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Would you like to tell us a little bit more about this vehicle purchase? Number one, is it in the budget?
It is. It is budgeted. It's in the budget. It's underneath that number, so it's under budget slightly. We're making a move from Fords to Chevy. We've actually ordered one with council approval twelve months ago. Supply and demand, so we're still waiting for that vehicle.
Wow.
It's a larger vehicle, and it costs a couple hundred more than the vehicles we currently have. We've had issues with our current Fords. We have been told that Tahos hold their value longer, so we're hoping when we get to the end of life cycle and we auction these vehicles, we actually get more money for them to go into our motor pool fund to help sustain that. There's a host of other reasons why we're making the move. The reality is, you don't know how the vehicle's going to perform until you have one for four, five, six years, so that's why we're changing from Fords to Chevys.
Is it all-wheel drive, Josh, and is it pursuit rated because it is all-wheel drive?
It is. It comes with two batteries, so our fuel conservation and our engine idle hour strategies can still be used for the Tahos, meaning we can shut it off. It doesn't have to idle all the time, so our computers can still run. There's a couple pictures, just to give you a visual. Now, that's not the paint scheme, but that's the vehicle. So we're not going to black and whites, but that is the vehicle, just to give you a visual. I think there's another image. It's kind of generic. That is a Tahoe. Again, we ordered one last year. We're supposed to get that July, August, so it's kind of one year behind because of supply and demand.
Was the one last year a Tahoe as well?
It was.
Okay. It's a big car.
It is. It's a big car. It allows us to store more things in the car, but the biggest driving factor is, I didn't know this until we dug and talked to my peers, but when you start getting into wear and tear and fixing a vehicle, for example, I'm not a mechanic, so these aren't my words, but to change the oil filter in a Ford, you have to tear the engine part to get to the oil filter. With Chevy, you don't. So when you get outside of a warranty, those are labor hours, and for the case in the city, Jeremy, who does a great job mechanic, those are more hours he has to spend doing that than working other things, so it all kind of adds up in our decision. And when you have a vehicle, it's a bigger vehicle, and it's only a couple more hundred dollars than the Ford, and you've had issues with the Ford, that drove or motivated us to change. That might be more than you were looking for, but.
So what do you anticipate the lifespan would be of a new vehicle like this?
Right now, it's about five years, and the hope is to push that off with, you know, monitoring and cutting back at our engine idle hours. So when you talk about a vehicle and why a vehicle falls apart, and this is why Jeremy for the DPW has been so critical in monitoring this, it's not the mileage that kills the vehicle, it's the engine idle hours. And so you have a vehicle that could be, let's say, fifty thousand mile, and you think, that's nothing for you or I, but would have what equates to idle engine hours of a hundred and fifty hours. So having that kind of communication with our city mechanic has been critical for us.
You know you're not going to stop it from, you're not going to make a turn lock because it's hot, or leave them out for air, or leave them out all winter for the heater. I mean, that's just a fact of life.
We have cut back significantly. We're going to continue to cut back.
Okay.
So the biggest thing, the dead of winter, they're not going to shut them off for heat. Summertime, we can control that a little bit. I mean, we've cut down significantly on our fuel. We've had to. We've installed some hardware last year in our computers that allow us to support the computer system two hours after the vehicle's turned off, so our watch guard in-car camera can still download Wi-Fi, the MBT doesn't die.
That's good.
That's a big strategy that we had to cut down the idle time, so we can cut down the engine idle hours and the fuel cost. So, you know, we'll see the next few years here if that's impacting the longevity of these vehicles. I mean, the goal here is to run the vehicle as long as you can. I mean, our detective sergeant car, we literally ran that thing into the frame rod and out, so we were successful in that endeavor.
I just have a question that's a little bit out of left field, so I apologize for that upfront, but are there any municipalities that are going to electric vehicles for police law enforcement?
None that I'm aware of.
Okay. Do you see that in our future? Are you getting any information about that?
You know, I don't know, Mayor, but I am going to a chief's conference next week, and there'll be all the vendors of state of Michigan. I anticipate there'll be some inquiries about that, so I'd be happy to report back and see what I know.
That would be great. I'm curious.
I know that in the past, they've had segways that can go thirty-five miles an hour. I certainly don't see that in our future, but I see where fuel cost is going, other costs, and we'll see what the vendors have to say. But as of right now, I don't know anyone who's using electric vehicles as their patrol fleet.
Okay. Like I said, it was out of left field. Sorry about that.
But with gas prices, not too far out of left.
Right. Off to me to think of it.
Anybody else have any questions? Thank you very much. Heather, could you take the roll call? Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Okay, item B. Okay. Consideration of a resolution proposing a charter amendment to section two dash three of the city charter. At the July fourteenth, twenty twenty-two study session, city council determined it is advisable and in the best interest of the residents of the city of Manistee to remove from the city charter the requirement that individuals to be at least twenty-five years old to be eligible for the office of city councilperson and directed staff to prepare the necessary documents to proceed accordingly. The city attorney has drafted two resolutions for council to consider that would accomplish this request. Heather, do you want me to read them aloud, or what would you like me to do? Should we do a motion?
We could provide a synopsis, I think, first, with that B.
We certainly can do that. I mean, I guess we would just need a motion to adopt whichever resolution if either of them council wants to consider. As council, I think, knows, and I sent out an email on this, one of the resolutions just dealt with the age of twenty-five years. It removed that part of that sentence from section two dash three. The other alternative resolution dealt with that issue, but other issues as well, as council may be aware, there was some, when I read the section, I noticed that there was no provision for the age requirement for people that are appointed to vacancies on council. So it had that provision, and then it also dealt with the resident for two years.
It changed it from a registered elector for two years to just being a registered elector at the time.
So we had basically three changes that were proposed in that resolution, so I guess it's just a question of which resolution, maybe we could get a motion and support and discuss that, and if it's that resolution council chose to adopt, we could vote on that.
My only concern is with some of our commissions, you can be either a property owner and not a registered voter within the city, and we allow that, so I'm just throwing that out there as something that we may have to look at if we went that direction.
And maybe we could identify the two different resolutions. Let's say resolution one was the one that just dealt with the twenty-five years, and resolution two was the one that had the additional considerations, and so if council wanted to make, I don't think we need to read them. You've already had them, and I'm sure reviewed them in detail. If someone wants to make a motion that's supported for adoption of either of those resolutions, then you can have a debate and discussion at that point.
I'd like to, if I would, I'd make the motion that we just eliminate the twenty-five-year age and then maintain the rest. In other words, I think it's important that somebody who's going to be on city council have at least two years' experience as a voter in our city before we, and be part of our city before we allow them to be able to take a seat with us.
I actually have done a lot of soul searching about this myself.
We should probably get either a support for that motion before discussion.
I'll support it.
Okay. And just for clarification purposes, this is the resolution that would only change that part of that one sentence.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I just have a question, though. For it to be a registered voter for two years in the city, does that mean in that specific district or just the city? So if they moved around in the city?
I can answer. It's not specific as to that, so I think it's just a registered elective.
Okay.
So it could be in another district and just moved into that district.
You still, they would just have to get their twenty.
Section three-one.
We also, though, have section three dash one that requires you to be.
You must be registered and live within your district.
At the time of filing.
At the time of filing.
But it doesn't have to be in that district for two years, though.
No, you just have to be a registered elector for two years, but you must live within the district that you want to represent.
Right.
Is this the section, though, for twenty-five, or are we going down to eighteen or twenty? Is that the second section? It would just eliminate an age, so it would basically, it would eliminate the age requirement. However, if you were going to be an elector for two years, then it would mean that you would be twenty years old.
Twenty or twenty-one.
Or twenty-one.
Yeah, I think.
All right. Depending on.
You register.
I did the math, but, I mean, my own daughter was born November twenty-fourth and started, the youngest person in her class started U of M when she was seventeen, so she would have been, if she lived here at that time and wanted to run for city council, she'd be twenty-one years old before she could run. But I think that's because of that two-year residency requirement, which I think is worthwhile to consider, and I think it's a good thing. I've talked to a number of different people who are in support of changing the age limit, and, but they're not, the ones that I've talked to, and I don't know how many that you guys have talked to, are a little bit, you know, want to take the more conservative approach, that we just eliminate that age requirement rather than.
I would like to say, if I could, that I think we're moving way too fast. Clearly, clearly, we're, I feel like we're really racing to get this done, and there's no urgency to this at all. There's no reason we're racing to do this. I mean, if we were doing this thoughtfully, we'd have a motion on the table that we liked, we agreed on, and we'd be voting on it. In spirit, I'm not opposed to the thing, but I think that we're just rushing ahead, and we got two different resolutions here, and we're not sure what it means, and clearly we're shoving the staff on fast forward trying to get this done. Personally, I think we don't want to hit pause, talk what we really want, get the resolution exactly as you want it, and then go forward. It probably won't make it November, but who cares? It's not like there's someone banging on the front door of City Hall wanting to run in November and can't. I just think that, because November, far as council is done, is done, I think, isn't it, Heather? Has the period passed?
Yeah, they couldn't, well, it's July twenty-sixth, yes. So it wouldn't be for this year, it'd be for next November.
We're forcing staff to go so fast and get this done. We haven't really fleshed that out. There's been three questions here that we should have resolved before this ever come to the table. So for me, that's what the issue is, not necessarily the concept. I just think we should hit pause and just flesh it out personally and get it done right.
I agree with Dave. I think we should eliminate the age requirement, but I think we're rushing this. Like, we got a lot of questions that need to be answered, and I don't know why we're rushing it. Like, it should be, the age requirement should be solved.
I don't know if it's appropriate, but I'd make a motion that we tabled it rather than advance it till we got it done right.
So the reason we did put the rush on it was because it needs to be, I think the bailout language needs to get to the county by the sixteenth of August, and it requires approval by the AG and the governor, and if it was to possibly get on November, we'd need to get direction out.
Yeah, I understood that then. I just don't think it's necessary, and I don't think that's where we should be doing governmental business. I think we should do it thoughtful, methodical, and get it right, because we made it done and say, oh, crap, we made a mistake, we should have done something different. That's just my personal opinion, is for district council.
Okay. I just want to read to you a short email that I received from Stacy Bytework today. It says, "I wanted to follow up with you in regards to our leadership class and one of the specific days of focus within our program, Government Justice Day. Over the years, participants have learned about how to get involved with local government, boards, and nonprofits as a part of being a community leader and what it entails to fulfill this role." One of them that has been brought up is that the city council charter in regards to age restrictions of needing to be twenty-five years old. I wanted to bring this to your attention as we have had interested parties over the years." And I have been a little bit involved with the leadership program this year, and I'm seeing some real leadership, and I don't, I think it's appropriate for us to take this matter up, whether it's now or whether we do it.
I won't argue. I think it's appropriate we address it. I just think that we're jammed it down staff's throat, jammed it down council's throat, and we need to just get it right before we just rush to do this. We just need to get it right.
I agree with him, because I think it looks bad if we rush it and then we miss something, and then we look stupid. Well, staff has. And then it doesn't get approved. Staff has done an extraordinary job in putting together these two resolutions based on our work session comments, so I appreciate their effort to work overtime and do that on our behalf. How does everybody else feel?
I think we all appreciate the efforts they put into it, but I agree with Mr. Bachman that we're just going to.
Well, we need a super majority to pass anything on this. Is that not correct? We need five votes, so it sounds like people want more time. Mick, are you at the same?
Yeah, I have no problems with delaying it. I do, though, I would suggest, though, if we're going to delay it, then we look at the total, and not just this particular part of our charter, but we actually have a charter review since it's been over five years. If we're going to have the extra time, then my suggestion is that we just go ahead and take on the requirement to do a charter review.
We would have to appoint a charter commission, and I believe they get paid to do that. Is that not correct?
Yeah, I guess I may have missed some of this. I mean, right, this is a charter amendment, not a charter revision.
Correct.
Okay, so a charter revision would be basically a complete replacement of your charter, essentially, or some really, really major part of the charter. Without a charter revision, you don't need a charter commission. Now, the mayor and I had talked that if the council wanted, and we were just dealing with this amendment and maybe some other amendment, you know, you could form a committee of council with the city attorney, maybe in the city clerk and city manager, and have discussions about it with a recommendation to council. But a charter commission, which is an involved process, isn't required for, you know, what we've been talking about.
I think we just talked about, because the mayor brought that up, but we didn't talk about it completely, really.
Right, but at least a review of our charter to see if there are other small areas that need to be tweaked.
I thought we had talked about, like, an ad hoc committee.
Right, exactly, council.
But legally, we have to form a charter commission to do a revision of the charter.
Only if, only.
Only if it's a revision.
Only if it's a revision.
Well, that would be the purpose of having one, right?
What would be for suggestions on?
It would be a review, not.
Yeah, I mean, you could have an ad hoc committee to identify what sections of the charter maybe you want to look at if that was necessary beyond what we've talked about. But you'd only get into having to have a charter commission if we were making a major revision or replacement of the charter.
I think from our conversations, there are probably a couple areas we can look at, but a full-on charter commission would be kind of a very much involved process, and maybe just looking first to see if there's just a couple areas we want to examine and discuss, and see if we can have recommendations that council's agreeable to, kind of be a good first step.
Well, we have a motion, we have a motion, so I suppose we're going to have to go ahead and take a roll call.
I think that makes sense, Mayor.
Heather.
Councilmember Bachman.
No.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
No.
Mayor Protem Sullivan.
No.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
No.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion failed.
Okay. All right. Moving on. Because, let's see. We have.
To where does this fall, then? What happens now? Can I ask that question?
Well, at this point, I think we have to wait until we can put it, I guess, on a study session and decide what to do next. All right, the next is notices, communications, and announcements. A report from the Finance Director, Oil and Gas Investment Board, and Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. A regular part of each council meeting is a report from a cooperating agency organizational department. At this time, Mr. Ed Bradford will report on the activities of the Treasurer's Office, the Oil and Gas Investment Board, and the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, and respond to any questions the council may have regarding their activities.
Good evening, council. Thank you for having me tonight. I'll make some brief comments about each of these three areas and answer any questions that you might have at the end. First of all, just to talk a little bit about the Finance Treasurer Department. We are a hybrid shared department with the clerk. We all do bits and pieces of various things of work, and so I just want to give a hats off to my staff. They're excellent to work with. We're a real cohesive group, and we all make each other better, so hats off to them. Heather's been the longest-serving part of that for twenty-two years, and she's city clerk and also does all of our accounts payable. There's myself, the CFO. I've been with the city for twenty years. Laura Lorraine is our deputy clerk and also does payroll. She's been there five years. Kaylee Owens is our utility billing and accounts receivable clerk, almost three years, and then our newest hire was Kendra Cook out of Plainfield Township, Deputy Treasurer Accountant. She's only been with the city for a year, but she's got twenty-two years of municipal finance experience. Some of the departmental responsibilities, we answer a lot of questions on the phone, via email, kind of direct traffic. All the revenue comes into the city through our department, and we're responsible for investing that cash to help earn income to support operations and capital projects. We obviously pay the bills. We handle all of the bonding and financing for the city, as well as the DDA, budgeting and accounting for the city, and also the audit. We do financial analyses, whether that's costing union contracts or looking at the impact of tax abatements, obviously our financial reporting. Then we also do, are the liaison with our IT contractor, do some of the frontline stuff. The facility manager reports up through our department, so does the contractual assessor, Molly, and we handle the back office for the Ramsdale Regional Center for their, so we pay all of their bills, we deposit all the revenue, we create their financial statements. Quickly, just some office metrics. I updated this just a little bit ago. You know, in a busy season, we can have up to a hundred, hundred-and-twenty-five customers at the window. That probably will be permanently reduced with post-COVID, because we have more options for payment. We have drop boxes, and people are more comfortable with that now. People are using credit cards. And we're just going to be launching, you'll see it in the tax bill newsletter that comes out, a way to automatically pay your tax bills through an auto debit, where we just take it out of your account on the due date for the summer and the winter taxes. That's very successful for our water and sewer customers, and we're hoping that a lot of the taxpayers will take that out, because it removes the chance of something getting lost in the mail. We process about seventy-three hundred tax bills a year and collect about ten-point-four million in taxes that we keep some of and distribute the rest on behalf of the tax interest. Forty-two thousand water bills annually, about twenty-three hundred AP checks, about five thousand invoices, and last year we paid about fifteen-point-nine million worth of bills, and we also handle lots of calls. Just the highlights of the last year, since the last time I presented, obviously, we went through our fiscal year twenty-twenty-one audit. We had an unqualified opinion. We've had an unqualified opinion for the last twenty years, so that's the best that you can get. We're proud of that. We're proud of that. I was honored to serve as interim city manager for a couple of months while we were conducting the manager search, and I, I put this in here because I really want to thank my staff for stepping up during that time period. You know, that, that's a lot to do, especially in the summer when it's busy, and they really helped kind of make that work, so I want to thank them.
I just want to interrupt you for a point. I also want to give you a shout out because you did that as well as going through an audit at the same time, so thank you for that.
It was busy, thank you. We did hire Kendra, our new deputy treasurer and accountant, and we're very glad to have her as part of the team. We negotiated the POM-COM contracts, helped, helped do those and got those through. Recently adopted the fiscal year 2023 budget, which was a very smooth process in my estimation. I was very happy with the way that went, and I, I think it checked all the right boxes. From a facility standpoint, we got the city hall roof redone. That was done as part of the 2005 renovation, and the metal was fine, but the gutter part, that's the membrane all the way around the outside, was having some pretty significant issues, and so we got that taken care of. And we're just about wrapping up yet another chart of account conversions for our general ledger, which is something that's required by the state. We were an early adopter of that five years ago, and they changed it significantly since, and they never really finalized it. But we wanted to do it before we moved from our old accounting system to BSNA, and now we're having to make additional changes. So you'll see that showing up in your financial statements in another month or two. It's going to be consolidated, some of the funds moved around, but I'll have a briefing memo so that it's not confusing for council. Let's talk a little bit about Oil and Gas Investment Board. So it's a five-member board comprised of the mayor, myself, councilmember Sullivan, and then two citizens, Doug Parks and Jeff Rowe. City manager Bill Gamble is an ex-officio non-voting member. Kelly McColl is the recording secretary, and we typically meet quarterly. Want to talk a little bit about Aztec Producing Company. That was the company that owns our wells and the processing facility up on Washington Street. That was sold to Hound Resources in March of 2021. Hound is a little bit bigger operation than Aztec was, and so far, the communication's been a lot better with them. However, we're still working with the new owners to get caught up on royalty payments, and I just put a call into them today because we still haven't gotten paid out, and they are quite a bit in arrears. Part of that was due to this sale and trying to straighten out the books a little bit, but we're going to have to, I think, push them a little bit here in the near future if we don't hear back from them. The Oil and Gas Fund, just as an overview, again, it's charter-protected trust fund, and it was established to preserve the royalties and royalty income from the city-owned mineral rights. The Investment Board authorized to oversee those investments, and they have hired an investment manager, Bartlett Wealth Management. We've been with them ever since 2008, when we started investing this fund like a, more like a public pension fund. They've done a fine job for us, which you'll see here in the next slide. This tracks the performance of the Oil and Gas Fund since basically, this shows portfolio inception date of 9/30/2010. It actually goes, they started investing the money in mid, mid 2008, right, right after the lowest point in the 2008 stock market crash. But for this time period, since inception, they've got a compounded annual rate of return of 9.1%. And keep in mind that this is not an all-equity portfolio. It's a 60 equity, 35 fixed income, 5% cash. Their trailing three-year average is 12.3, trailing five-year average is 10.7. So they've done a really, really good job. You can see, though, that the quarter today is minus 4.5%, and I wanted to talk about that, just a little bit about the volatility that we've been experiencing in the markets. If you look at the left side, they can see back in July of 2020, the value of the portfolio was about 11.7 million. Today, two years later, it's about 11.7 million, which implies a flat return over that time period. But if you look, the two other measuring points are June of '21 and March of '22, it was up to 13.5 million. So we've had a tremendous run in equities, really, since 2008. We've, we've not had a bear market, and with this hyperinflation and a lot of the geopolitical concerns and the supply chain issues and the fallout from COVID, we're likely looking at a recession. And I think if you actually, probably will, in the future, you'll look back, and we're probably already in the recession, but it just hasn't met the technical standard so far. So we are having some fluctuations, but the nice thing is, the way we've set up this portfolio is we, we average those calendar year-end values or quarter values out, so I'm not overly concerned about this. Just today, the portfolio itself, because the stock market was way up today, was up $161,000. So it just goes to show you, we can have that much movement in one day in our portfolio. And you just have to tune out that noise and look at the longer-term trends, and that's what we're doing, and that's how we've managed it with our spending rule, and it's worked out very well. The last thing I want to point out is the total distributions that we've had from this fund since we started investing it has been almost $5.7 million over that time period. And all, pretty much all goes to capital improvements in the city, whether that's building improvements or streets or what have you. So it's been a very, very positive asset for the city to have. I'll move on to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. It's a five-member board, Megan Kempf, Marlene McBride, Shelley Memberto, Kit Pomranki, and Roger Yoder is the chair. I am the Brownfield Administrator, and our hired consultant is Fishbeck Roman Wilson is the gentleman who we normally deal with. Quick, what is a brownfield? There are properties that have some level of contamination or other things that make it really problematic to redevelop. Typically, they're formal manufacturing or industrial sites. That's what people tend to think of when it's brownfield, and they're typically found in older communities. However, they've really broadened the statute to include a lot of other properties, whether that be functionally obsolete and things like that, that really may not have a lot of environmental contamination but are difficult to redevelop anyway. So the brownfield statute, you can really do a lot of things, things under that. Why, why should we have a brownfield program? The county has one, the city created one shortly after that because they wanted a little bit more control over what was happening. But there's really three reasons. One is to re-energize the local economy, one is to improve our neighborhoods, and one is to protect environmental health. And there's a lot of things underneath that that go with each of them. You know, re-energizing local economies, for example, the Gateway Project on the Hampton Inn, which I'll talk about. Neither one of those would have happened or will happen without a brownfield plan. It's just a fundamental need in today's market, and with the costs and the things that developers are looking at, order for them to get, you know, even a marginal return on projects like these, they have to have incentives. And a brownfield's a really good way to do it. One of the reasons brownfield is really helpful for the city is not only does it help to redevelop buildings, but it also can fund public infrastructure, and we've done a lot of that, which is, which is nice, and we'll talk about that a little bit on the next slide. So the Hampton Inn project, you can see it's out of the ground, they've got one elevator shaft, it looks like it's pretty much done, and they're really working hard on that site. The council approved that brownfield plan in January of '22. I believe the state's approved it.
I don't think that's the elevator shaft, that's the stairway. That's the stairway.
Could be, it could be.
The opening is not large enough for elevator doors. I looked at it tonight.
Okay, so that's the stairwell, but the point is, I think that's as high as it's going to be or close. That looks like it's about five levels.
And the other, they're going to, yeah, put the other one in and the other.
So that's really good progress. They're, they're moving along with that, and the council and the state approved developer-eligible costs and public infrastructure costs. And as an example, the public infrastructure that's going to come out of this is the whole loop is going to get resurfaced on the west end, or the south end that hasn't been done. There's going to be additional parking, we're going to have a looped water main, we're going to have some stormwater retention. So there's a lot of public benefit that's going to come out of this. Total plan was about 1.5 million that was approved. Obviously, construction's underway, and they're hoping for a late spring opening, so that, that's a project that, you know, a lot of pieces had to come together, including another tax abatement, but a brown, the brownfield plan was a very significant piece of that. And then the Gateway Project, I think they were supposed to have started demo today. I didn't go down.
They did.
As the email said, so this was taken last week when the equipment was parked there. And they're going to work down the south side towards 31. They'll pause over the Fourth of July, and then they'll continue on the other side to knock that stuff down. Their tentative finish date is July 22nd. So once that's down, they'll do some more investigation and, you know, continue to spend down the grant loan that the city received for this project. They are starting to heat up on the brownfield plan. We're waiting to get some information from them, but we'll be working through that with the developer and the developer's attorney and our consultant to, to get a plan in place. And it will be very similar to Hampton Inn in terms of, it's going to have developer-eligible costs, and it's going to have public infrastructure in it. The size of it's kind of still getting worked out. Anybody have any questions about either brownfield or Oil and Gas Investment Board?
I have one. Briefing to a presentation about the land bank at Jefferson School.
Yep.
It sounded a lot like what you just said. Are, do they co-mingle? Are they, are they supportive of one another? Are they in competition with one another? Do we have to fight? I mean, is there?
Yeah, so here, here is, that's a really relevant kind of a current event topic. They, they changed the, the brownfield statute a number of years back, and I'm going to kind of, in a nutshell, basically, there's a provision in there that allows a brownfield plan to be used to help facilitate the sale of property. So it's very open-ended. And what a lot of developers have done, and what the state is really pushing, because they've had presentations to talk about this, is to use that tool in conjunction with land banks to help build attainable housing, which you've heard a lot about in some of our presentations. And so as an example, I think it's in Norton Shores, I might have the community wrong. They, they did a pretty high-profile project where a developer was building single-family homes in that attainable range, but in order to make it work for him, he had to get like a $30,000 per house incentive to help sell those. And they were able to use the land bank and set up with their brownfield authority where they can capture the taxes and provide that back to the developer so he can go ahead and complete the project, but it lowers the selling point. And that's just one example of how that could work with the land bank here, and I think we've had meetings with the county treasurer, Rachel, who's also the land administrator. So I think we're working cooperatively to do things like that. It's, it's a really good process, but it's kind of new ground being plowed. There hasn't been a lot of these projects, but there's a lot of interest in it. And I know our consultant, Fishbeck, just came out with a handbook on how to kind of do this sort of project. It's just hot off the presses within the last month. So there'll be more discussion about that coming forward. There may be some options to be able to do that, maybe do a pilot project. Okay. Any other questions? If not, thank you very much, and again, I just want to thank council for the support for, you know, all that staff, that I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Citizen comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of the city involvement. Citizens in attendance shall be recognized, the mayor, for comments limited to five minutes. Letters submitted account, so will not be publicly read. Please state your name.
Ms. Pratt.
Go ahead.
Okay, good evening. I contacted Mayor Beaton on May 22nd to ask about my formal complaints and where those, the status of those that I requested in March. I was told that I needed to stay in my own lane. That's a first. Since I made that request in March, I was not contacted by either the city manager or the mayor in regards to the complaints, my concerns, or any potential outcomes. So you can imagine my surprise when I watched the recording from a city council meeting where Mayor Beaton mentioned that they were closed. During this call, I asked to file formal complaints again and ethics complaints. She informed me that the city does not have a process for filing formal complaints or ethic complaints. At this time, I'm asking for the city to develop a process. I find it astonishing that you can file a complaint at a healthcare organization, a law enforcement organization, a school, but not at a city level. Many cities have a process for filing a complaint. A large portion of that is back to communicating with the person who lodged the complaint against the city official, employee, or third-party contractors. I've reached out to many city council members from other cities, townships, and even spoken with city attorneys from neighboring districts or surrounding district areas. They've all been more than willing to share their processes. In fact, I was even informed by several that there are state laws pertaining to ethic complaints that must be followed. So you can imagine my surprise when Mayor Beaton told me that I could do neither with filing a formal complaint or ethics complaints. Please note, I'm still requesting to file those complaints as of tonight. Mayor Beaton, you mentioned to me that you thought there were communication issues with the city. I believe that's true and an understatement. However, I am asking how these will be addressed. Public relations should be a top priority for any city, community, or public entity. An example of this is when I spoke at the council meeting on May 3rd and followed up in an email on May 4th about the road conditions of Fourth Street that many residents had contacted the city about. I asked what the process was for requesting repair work. In a conversation on May 5th, when you reached out to me, you told me to give Mr. McCullough and Mr. Gamble until Monday to respond. I'm still waiting for that information or a response. It has been 48 days. To me, that is unacceptable. What is the city's plan for communication? Most companies that work with the public have a 48-hour turnaround. I understand that might not be doable in this sense, but I would think responding within a week or two would be acceptable. I'm wondering why city policies, processes, and procedures are not posted on the city website or readily available to residents when they are requested. For some of these, I have requested processes three times from three different city employees, and I'm still waiting. Those go back to April. It is my understanding that these types, or this type of information should not have to be FOIA-requested. I'll leave my concerns about FOIA requests for another time. I would like to propose that the city develop an online process for residents, visitors, or community members to lodge a complaint or leave a compliment. I think that this would be valuable feedback to receive. I have spoken with many area residents that have concerns, but they're not sure how to have them addressed, or when they call the city manager's office, they don't receive phone calls back. Several other people have informed me that they in fact have had the phone hung up on them, so I guess I'm not the only one. I believe Mr. Gamble could develop something like an online process, perhaps before the Smoke on the River Festival or event, because I think it'd be interesting to gain feedback from that event. On a side note, Mayor Beaton, I would like to thank you for bringing to light my concern that we discussed on May 5th during our phone call pertaining to the fact that a large portion of the vacation rentals in Manistee are not being taxed as secondary residence because they're not being reported as such by homeowners who have purchased them and are running them as rentals. That's been a large area of concern for me, working in the education field, because schools are going out without the 18 mils that is promised to them, that greatly impacts the opportunities to not only schools but area youth that benefit from the schools using that money to turn around and provide them with resources. It seems wrong that the schools have went for so long without receiving this funding, funding guaranteed to them through the HUDLE amendment, because as I talked to you, you told me that there were not resources at the city level to ensure that these were in fact secured as secondary homes.
Mr. Pratt, your five minutes are up.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Is there anybody else who'd like to come forward and make any comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to officials and staff. Mr. Gamble.
Thank you, Mayor. We have the Milwaukee House site approval, a site plan approval was approved by zoning, so that'll be going out tomorrow morning. The PFAS plan, our remediation plan, was submitted to the state. We received a letter back on Friday, so we'll be meeting internally in a meeting with Eagle to go over that, to see what we need to be doing. But I'll be giving council an update as soon as we talk with Eagle and, and have our next steps in place. Thank you.
Mr. Saylor.
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
Heather.
Nothing, Your Honor.
City engineer.
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
City Finance Director.
Nothing more, Your Honor, thank you.
BPW Director.
I do have, would like to update council on things, on a few things. I get a lot of one-on-one questions, a lot of questions get filtered through the city manager. So I know it's summer, but it's also right in the heart of construction season for us, so I'll give a very brief kind of synopsis of where those are at, and if you guys want more information or details, we can prepare more detail for you. But the Quincy Street project is still tentatively scheduled to begin in August, but that's dependent on them receiving all their materials. The contractor hasn't had any updates on that, but the water main has been delivered. They're still waiting on the sanitary. Trying to work this way, we just had a pre-construction meeting yesterday for Memorial Drive. We expect the contractor to mobilize in the next three to four weeks, and they expect that, that project will go very quickly. It was interesting, most contractors are having trouble finding trade people to do work, and what this contractor said is, the only reason that they could get somebody to do the concrete work in all of their resources was because other projects are being held up because they can't get pipe. This project doesn't have pipe, so, so that's a good thing. Maple Street Bridge, for all intents and purposes, is closed out. That project went really well, and I'll be providing a little synopsis on that to the city manager to provide to you. Working from the beach, the shoreline project is substantially complete. There's a couple punch list items there, but again, that turned out really well. Help me out if I'm missing some. We have 12th Street by the school, that's under construction. They're doing some storm sewer upgrades. Pavement's been crushed, but our plan is to get the sidewalks, the curb and gutter and the crossings in, paving it all before school resumes, and we've been coordinating that with the schools. The treatment plant, the expansion, the new headworks is just about substantially complete. This weekend, part of next week, we're starting up all the equipment and going through all the troubleshooting to make sure it's working correctly, and, and our staff are getting trained on that. The tanks are constructed. By tomorrow, all three of them will be full of water as we're testing their watertightness, and then using that water back through the plant for, for the startup and the, and the testing. So that project's going really well, and will be in a position to accept the sanitary flows of the entire city when the pipeline is completed. The 48-inch pipeline or. The 48-inch pipeline, or what we've called the conveyance, is at 7th Street now, and they're right at the intersection of Ramstow, so we've got two blocks more going to the north to get to 5th Street and tie into our overflow. That project should be completed in the next couple months as well. Jackson Van Buren is completed. The Maywood Water Tank is being painted. All the primer on the interior of that water tower is completed, and they should be coding that pretty soon. If you hear of any rusty water issues in the city, that's pretty common right now. We only have the industrial tower that's in service, but we've got wells operating at both ends of the city, and we've got very, very high demand right now with the high heat. So the pumps are running all day long. The way that they flow through the network of mains changes, and it can create scour. If people do get rusty water, they're more than welcome to call the public works and we can advise them, but basically, it's kind of let it pass and then try to flush it through on an un-aerated sink. The D-WAM, you've probably seen the vectors around town were digging up or exposing water services at the curb stop, both on the private side and on the public side. They've got through the majority of those right now, so that project's going really well. And there's quite a few other ones, but...
Yeah, the roofing project, they're finishing up at the fire station pretty quick. They're going to be doing some work at Ramstow, pulling down a flight pole. They're going to, so you see a crane over in this area, and then some work here at City Hall, the flight pole, some gutters, and then they'll be moving down to the White Works building, and that'll be the last roof in that project.
So, any questions?
Fourth of July.
Fourth of July.
We going to be looking good on the beaches for Fourth of July? Are the ale wives going to be cleaned up by then, do you think? Are we going to put a little bit of extra attention on the beaches?
We're doing everything we can to get all of our tasks ready to welcome everybody. The ale wives are a, they're an issue up and down the shoreline. We are probably at the point where we need to clean the shoreline on a daily basis, including the weekends. It's really dependent on the wind, but there, if you talk to the fishermen, there are masses of them out on the water. So when we get the right wind, it blows them into shore. Mickey's been doing it five days a week, just getting at least the scum line along the shore, but I think we're going to have to do the weekends now, too.
Yeah. Yeah, I did get a call this week about it complaining, because early morning joggers are down there, and it's like, it's all slimy and everything from the fish.
Yeah.
But then I went down a few hours later, and the beach had definitely been cleaned, so there wasn't a lot of them out there.
Yeah. One of the complaints that we haven't been able to fulfill is north of 5th Avenue, all the way down to the North Beach access. That is city property, but we have never maintained that stretch of beach in that sense. There's a couple obstacles. One is the storm outfall that's at Manmade Lake. It's, we can't get around that with the equipment. And then we're expecting the piping plovers to be nesting anytime. Usually, we get notification by now, but if they nest in their normal spot, then we physically can't take any equipment north of the beach.
Okay.
Jeff, are you going to take and remove those fences that I talked to you about before at Mack Park? I mean, they're laying down, they're standing against the tree. Why don't we just take them out of there?
We can do that, yeah. We're having trouble getting all the fencing contractors. There's been one, not a Cadillac, that's been responsive for years. There's a local one that hasn't responded to us in years. However, we called the local one yesterday and said, we have to get that softball fence at First Street repaired before the Fourth of July. And that was yesterday. He showed up tonight and is working on it, so, but we'll...
Yeah, just get...
I'll get that taken care of.
Get those gates out of there, they're no use anyway.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else? Thank you.
Chief Glass.
Just want to thank council for the approval of the vehicle purchase. Thank you.
Welcome. Chief Cameron.
Nothing, Your Honor. Thank you.
Mr. Bachman.
I do. My blood pressure's up. Listening to Mr. Pratt, taking him on face value, we are failing our citizens. If we're not responding to their calls, answering their questions, answering their FOIAs, we hold every employee here to the standard to return phone calls, return emails from the most newest employee to city council. And if we're not doing it, shame on us. And I think the city manager's office is responsible to make sure that stuff's getting We can't, I sat at this meeting, and I asked the mayor specifically, have we dealt with that complaint? She said yes. I said, we communicated that to Mr. Pratt that the issue was closed, you said yes. He says no. I don't know the answer. I'm just telling you. That's all I told at the council meeting. I was surprised to hear him tonight. I'm going to end it there, but we're doing that what he says. We're failing miserably at your job, all the jobs. Thank you.
Sumner, welcome back and make any comments.
Thank you, I do. Happy first day of summer. Jeff, I just wanted to say to you and your crew, thank you. The River Walk, I've been walking it almost weekly, and it's looking beautiful. And I'm very proud to be in this town, and I'm looking at all the things that you're working on in addition to those little things, and I just wanted to say thank you. I was talking with somebody recently about a mentorship with the mentorship program that the city council members would take a high school student and mentor them for a year in city government and what goes on with it. And I know we've been kind of talking about, how do we get a younger community involved and things like that? And I just thought that sounded like a really wonderful thing for us to think about. I think it would be really fun to work with a high school kid and do something like that. So I just wanted to throw that out there. I don't know who might take that on or whatever, but I think that was pretty neat. And then I also wanted to give you an update on the MRA. I just went to our MRA board meeting yesterday, and I'm very proud to announce that our MRA staff is fully staffed now. We have an executive director, and they also have their program manager on board, and baseball season is in full swing. No pun intended. But that's super exciting. And then they are actually, we are in the process, MRA board is in the process of getting feedback to look at what, we've been around for 80 years. Can you believe that? MRA has been around for 80 years. And we were thinking about what's the next 80 years going to look like. And so we're doing a survey of all the families and members out there, and she just sent me the link to take the survey, if anyone wants to, that's involved in MRA in any way and doing anything with sports. So I will get that to who? Do I get that to? Could we post it somewhere? I don't know. The link to do the MRA?
Yes, you could send that to my office.
Okay.
Before I speak.
And that would be great. And I just wanted to let people know that that was out there, because I think it would be really great to get as much feedback as possible about this wonderful organization that we've had around for so long. It's so great to see the smiling faces and the, all the Facebook posts of the little kids swinging their bats, and it's just really exciting, but just wanted to share that. I think that's all.
Ms. Cal, yeah?
Almost said Ms. Cal, but I'm sorry. My kids are actually on the T-ball, so having a lot of fun. I just, I've had a lot of complaints about the scooters around town, and they've been leaving, they've been left in the streets, and are we, do you have an update about that? Are we having racks put up around town for those, or...
And it doesn't work with racks. They're supposed to be freestanding, but I did contact the account manager to talk to the fleet manager in the area about making sure that they're rebalanced more frequently. I think it's been better since, I think you sent that email, but I don't know what your feedback is on it.
It's gotten a little bit better, but I mean, I see, especially where in my district, the truck route, like, some of them are just left right in the street, and I know a lot of the trucks have been going around them, and I just see that, I mean, they're going to get run over, if they haven't already.
Okay.
So we've got a better job of actually picking those up, or actually, you know, maybe setting better limits on how to put them somewhere.
And I think rebalancing them, I think people are able to take them throughout the city, and certain areas are blocked off, geofence like the River Walk, and you can't park them on the bridge, but they should be rebalancing them, and they should be parked. It's, if they don't park them correctly, it potentially keeps the meter going on them. So there's, I can talk to them about kind of making sure they're rebalancing more quickly. And if you see an area, if you could, you can send it to me, I'll take a look and report it. But people can also report them by going onto the app, or there's a number and an email to report it, but I'm happy to...
Anybody could take those bikes and just put them somewhere else, though?
You can. If you scoot them along, they'll start beeping as if they're, it's like a theft prevention, but you can move them. I've done it a couple times.
Okay. Because I see neighbor kids, like, just take them and play with them, and so...
Yeah, if they start rolling them, they'll start beeping.
Okay.
Mr. Kowalski.
Jeff, are we going to do anything with the bleachers down at First Street? I've had complaints about those things at the west side of the field, the bleachers. Some of the older people said they can't get up on them. Some of the boards are bad. If you would sit on them, you're afraid of falling through. Have you ever looked at those things?
I haven't heard any complaints on that, but I'll certainly look at them.
Okay, yeah, because they were telling me about them.
Is that the softball fields?
Yes.
Okay.
Are we ever going to get a tour of the treatment?
Said, give me a call, and I'd be happy to do that for you, anytime.
I guess we didn't get enough interest the last time or something.
Well, I'm happy to do a one-on-one if you want.
Aaron and I wanted to go through there.
I did mine.
Did you really? You didn't call me?
Well, I was last minute, and with my job, I kind of...
Okay. And then, are we going to get that light pole fixed on River Street by Kelly's? And I always see we got two cones down there.
Yeah, there's two light poles that are, both been, have been damaged by vehicles. We've had them ordered for, since they were damaged, so I think it's getting close to a year now.
Yeah.
About three weeks ago, Top Line informed us that one of them got shipped, but it was just primed, so he had to send it off to get it painted, and I don't have word on the other one.
Okay. Yeah, it's been sitting there a long time. So, good.
So, yeah, our next, I'm tempted to just order some extras so we've got them in stock, because...
Are they very expensive?
They're, yeah, they're expensive.
I know a lot of them are getting rest, did you know that?
Yeah, they do need paint. We did budget some paint in the upcoming budget to start repainting some of them. That'll be a multi-year project.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Probably why it'd be a good idea to have a spare, so you could put a new one in and then paint the old one.
Yeah, that's, that's just what I was referencing.
Makes sense.
And we do have the draft of the, while I'm up here, sorry. We do have the draft of the door hangers for the brush pickup. Katie's working with Jack Pine on that right now, so we should get that rolling soon. Thank you.
Mr. Schamansky.
Are there any updates on the grants that we submitted? In particular, we had one for the Veterans Park. Have we gotten any?
The North River Walk?
Yeah.
So that, we'll get the preliminary scoring in August, usually late August, early September, and we'll have an opportunity to provide additional information, and then the final scoring will be in December.
Okay.
Typically.
Thank you.
And then the EDA grant for the South River Walk, we had to get, they are asking for a SHPO, State Historic Preservation Office, letter of no effect, and we're doing the required research. You have to hire historic, someone who's kind of qualified in historic preservation to prepare the, do the due diligence to look into it. We did hire someone through Spicer, and they're working on that right now, so it's, once we've got that back to the EDA, I think that'll help move it along.
And then, any updates on the amphitheater?
So I don't think that's, it's a DNR Spark grant. I don't think that's opened up just yet, but it looks like they're going to have three rounds, and then each year's going to be $100,000 to $1 million. So we'll have to meet with Spicer, talk about how we could phase it, maybe do a million-dollar project the first year, but we're kind of waiting for that to open up at this point to apply.
Okay. Thank you.
One other grant that we didn't, we're not successful on was, we applied for money to do the beach master plans, and we were unsuccessful in that. So we'll probably be reapplying.
Based on Mr. Bachman's request, I did talk to Bill, the manager. I went in with, I got all the information from Mrs. Pratt, called me up, and we discussed it. I did go in and talk with Mr. Gamble, and he was going to look further into this. So based on what you said, I agree with you.
There has to be communication.
There's more information that has to be filed.
And I think we've included Mr. Saylor. We kind of had this, the original complaint has now morphed into several other topics. It does seem like when I taught, when, you know, I originally talked with Mr. Pratt, it became about a lot of other issues. I don't recall not answering a call or hanging up on any other person other than Mr. Pratt when he threatened to get an attorney involved, but if anyone has any concerns, I'm willing to address them. I could meet with Mr. Pratt again to discuss his issues, but I feel like the first issue has been kind of, we've looked into it for many, many hours. We've met with them for two and a half hours with the Pratts, so I'm not sure if anything else can be resolved even at this point with that issue.
No.
Oh, I'm done. All right. First of all, I do want to thank Mr. Pratt for his comments. I also want to mention that several years ago, I had made a suggestion at city council that we have, oh, you know, a spot on our city website where we could lodge a complaint, and mostly talk about blight and other issues, but I think, you know, having something on the dashboard would be useful. I don't, to be honest, like I have said, I'm not sure how to handle a formal complaint. I did talk to the city manager. I didn't feel that there was any wrongdoing on his behalf. I think it's a communication problem that he needs to, needed to work out with his staff in relationship to your parent sewer problem, that it could be handled differently and escalated quicker, faster, and through the chain. So you did call me a couple of times. I always try to call you back. You called me about 4th Street. I called you back. We had, I think I'm close to, like, a 40-minute conversation where I talked about the whole process of the grading streets. I've tried to be as helpful as I can. If I haven't been, I apologize for that. So that being said, that's the end of my comments. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.